So, let's call a meeting. It's like it's 22. Doesn't appear to be any adjustments to the agenda. So, let's review minutes from the last meeting. Got any comments or desires on that? No?
I have motion to approve last meeting's minutes.
Ezra.
Ezra.
I'll second that. Okay, all table. Any public to speak on an non-agenda item? Okay. Doesn't appear to be any home business or just sort of random new business. The administrative appeal application for the Iroggo Solar Project. Bailey, you want to tell us where you're at with that? Or what's transpired, anything in addition to what's in the packet?
Um, I have nothing in addition to what's in the packet. That's all the information that I have. And...
Ezra, have you issued a permit?
Yes.
Okay. What was the date on that?
Eighty-three.
What triggered the change in use situation?
There was...
There's apparently an application here from Kirk Jones. Talking about change in use.
Um, because of it being deemed an essential service by the town attorney, they didn't need to have a change of use.
Okay. That's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Because it's a permitted use.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so, a permit was issued and apparently Luke, you're taking exception to that?
Yep.
Okay, on what basis?
Well, as an inactive, I've been on the planning board for seven years. I'm currently inactive. Also, obviously, on the direct butter, you have property. The way I see this is, this is, you know, solar farms are industrial, industrial applications. That's what they're all classified as. Every once in a while, you'll see one that comes in a commercial with light industrial setting. They have like usually several tiers of these things. And when, I guess to back up slightly, you're going to call it essential service. In the code book that we go by, it's what it says under essential service, it does say that CEO has typically right out of front of the company. But nowhere in this book, anywhere, does it say anything about solar. Particularly, it doesn't say anything about large-scale solar, which is industrial. And right here, it says utilities are essential service. It gives an A B C. It's all about distribution lines. And that is a sure, you know that better than anybody in this room. And what it's, what it's telling me is that it is essential for the residents or maybe a commercial business to be able to get this. It's essentially, the electrons are running in one direction. Like, if you build a house somewhere, you've got the ability, you're allowed to have this. It's an essential service. But for a situation like this, number one is an industrial application somehow skipping the planning board and all protocols of public meetings that have industrial applications going to a residential zone. And we had an issue years ago with the cement plant. That was even in my opinion, I was on planning board time, a lot closer. And there was things that, you know, is it or isn't? Is it a commercial? Is it industrial? Obviously, the courts determined that it was industrial. And that was industrial and commercial a lot closer than industrial or residential. So, you know, something like this, the way I see it, I believe most of the planning board members would have seen it this way. This would never get through the planning board. You know, we don't ever let industrial applications go into residential zone. You can't just use it on it unless you put it out to a town vote. You gotta get it through a petition or you gotta ask local committees to rewrite it to see if the town will favor of it. You know, it's certainly, you know, something like this is easily able to keep values on its property. And how I will explain that is if, if my house, if I duplicate my house and set it on two identical pieces of land, and one has a nice view, a scenic view, that's one of the things that people get on a planning board. Does it disrupt natural beauty in any way, such way, shape, or form? Ninety-nine times out of a hundred, I'm pretty confident, a person's going to buy a house, that's all they're going to, that's all they'll think of. And nine months out of the year, I will have a very obvious view of those. Right on seven to eight, I won't see any marks field in the most part, unless I'm standing up on the other one. But nine months out, eight to nine months out of the year, I can see eighty percent of this field. And I don't want to look at that. I don't, you know, I don't believe my neighbors, I don't like conversations, people feel the same way. People come to Rainsley, they, they, they don't come to Rainsley to try to buy a place out in the little bit of this and look at this. And I don't have any problem with solar in general. I think it's, I think it's all right. But I just know it makes the problem on industrial application bypassing planning board, bypassing all processes, having to be considered essential service when, to my opinion, it doesn't help the town of Rainsley. It helps Mark financially and the company that's putting it in. You know, Mark, he's not using power from it. It's not actually, he already has electricity. Town of Rainsley has an abundance of electricity. This is practically, it's just going to go into the grid, get sold off somewhere. So, that's my argument with that. But the planning board book specifically says that all possible distribution lines. And from our experience, if it doesn't stay in the book, you can't just claim to wing it and go, well, it's close enough to this, or it's close enough to that. You actually have to like create an ordinance for it and look through the process. So, that's why I'm contesting the permit. Like, we don't think it should be written out. And if it would have came to the planning board, like, we don't think it would pass the planning board based on it being industrial, it's going into residential. It just doesn't ever happen.
What level of industrial do you feel it is?
Light. Light to moderate?
It's not moderate.
Right. Light or heavy? Yeah, there's industrial, light, industrial, commercial, I think it goes down to that. But anything over an acre, the courts, it's all interpreted as it's, right now, it's industrial. The only argument out there that I can find anywhere was they're trying to ease that a little bit, some towns are trying to create ordinances to allow it to go into commercial and try to make it a little more flexible because they're not the dirtiest things. They're certainly not paper mills or concrete asphalt plants, et cetera. So, you know, I do encourage, whether it be the planning board, whether he, zoning committee, to come up with something that works. It's unfortunate, this town, we don't have a lot, a lot of places to put things, but it is what it is, you know? And we saw that with cement plant, it cost the town a lot of money when this whole lengthy process went through.
So, just for the record, the definition for light industry is, "A use engaged in the manufacturing predominantly from previously prepared materials of finished products or parts, including processing, fabricating, assembly, treatment, packaging, incidental stores, sales, and distribution of those products." Doesn't seem like there's any manufacturing going. It's a collection of solar energy and then a subsequent distribution of that.
Yeah, I'm just telling you that every court, every, everybody looks at these as industrial soon.
Do you have any specific cases or any specific you can state? Like, you keep saying the courts have, the courts have. Do you have any specifics? Like, what court, like, what town or what court case said that this solar plant is an industrial?
I, I didn't bring that in with anybody. It was there. I, I literally tried to find something where it can go, large farms or a lot of old reserves, like, I can't find it anywhere.
So, that's, my name is Brad Parker. My wife and I moved up here a year ago. She's starting to do the liquid drive. We operate in standard with a little trunk. And one of the things that attracted us to that particular piece of land, and we had spent probably three months, four months looking up here in the right place in my house. And one of the things that attracted us is that we could sit in the back porch, look out the backyard, and now through the trees into the field. It was serenity, it was quiet. It was, it was beautiful. We asked her almost fifty times, is this residential zone out there? And she said, yes, it is. So, our feeling was, we're going to buy a house out in the woods. We're going to retire here someday. We love range, we fell in love with the people, we fell in love with the fact that the funding models are very keen on water. It's natural, people are friendly here, and we love it. I don't want to sit in my, how many people here have been down Route Two in Fireington and seen huge solar panels on the side of the road? It's horrible. And I don't want to sit in my back porch and look out into that field and see solar panels with a ten, fifteen feet. My property value goes right down tubes. So, I'm concerned about that.
Brian?
Yep.
I think it's worth noting that we need to set a public hearing for this. We don't actually want to have a public hearing tonight. This is, this meeting is designed to deem the application complete or incomplete and set a date for a public hearing where we can actually have the public discussion. That's part of the process.
How does a public hearing fit into the process?
That's part of the process. I didn't write the ordinance. Can you speak to that, Jonathan?
It would only be part of the process if it didn't claim. Not our process.
Right.
We don't have public.
Right.
We're basically a board that reviews the decisions made by the code enforcement officer, their administrative appeals, whether or not we feel the code enforcement made a mistake and did the wrong thing or did it right there. And right now, I'm assuming there's an appeal to us that the code enforcement officer issued a permit on this. And so, it's an administrative appeal. Is that correct?
We have the town's attorney here to maybe give us some guidance to make sure we're following the process correctly. Can she, Kristen Collins, make sure that we're on board with how we're handling this so that we... Kristen, can you hear her?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me? For some reason, my video isn't working, so sorry about that. Yeah, my understanding was tonight was to receive the application and set a date for a hearing. So, there does need to be a hearing on this. And remember that, you know, there is also the property owner and developer that have a right to be heard, and I don't believe they've received formal notice of a hearing. So, that's why we can't proceed with the merits of this tonight. And should just set a date to do the substance of it at a different date.
I don't know, where is it in the zoning ordinances that a public hearing is required? It doesn't go before the review of the planning board?
A hearing is always required when someone's due process rights are at stake. And so, when an application is being appealed that involves the property owner's due process rights as well as the appellant's, and so, they both have the right to be heard in a formal setting where they, you know, where they each have an opportunity to speak. The board has an opportunity to ask questions. Now, whether it's a public hearing would be left to the ordinance, meaning does the public have the right to come into that hearing and say their piece? I don't think the public has the right to do that, but certainly the applicant and the property owner do.
Only people withstand.
Exactly.
Kristen, can I ask you a question? Why is the Board of Appeals convening if there is no appeal on anything? What, what's the appeal here?
The appeal is that the code enforcement officer, the code enforcement officer granted a use permit essentially for this property to have the solar panels there.
So, I was correct. This is an administrative appeal based on...
Administrative appeal, right.
What the code enforcement officer did. So, we're being asked whether or not the code enforcement officer made an error when they issued the building permit. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And the code enforcement officer issued a building permit because, under our existing zoning ordinance, the only thing that this can qualify is an essential service. And the central services, the code enforcement officer can issue a permit for that without the planning board, a conditional use permit. Is that correct?
Uh, that was the basis for her decision, yes. And that was based on my legal advice interpreting the ordinance. So, the way I see this appeal is, number one, is challenging whether she had the authority to grant that permit or whether it should have gone to the planning board. And then, I believe he's also challenging some of the individual findings that were made. You know, for instance, does it have a negative effect on views and things like that? Whether those fall under the ordinance or not is for the board to decide. But, so I see this as being kind of a two-step argument. You know, did she have author, authority to issue this decision? And if she did, did she do it properly? Did she apply the ordinance properly to the application?
But the way our ordinance is written, she had no choice. Is that correct?
My opinion is that it's an essential service, but, you know, the, the appellant is here asking the board's opinion, and you could certainly find differently than I did. And then, and that the code enforcement officer did. Your job is to look at the facts of this application and figure out where you think it falls in the definition. And if you think it falls under essential service, then yeah, she was right to issue a permit, or at least that she, she was right to find that she had jurisdiction to issue the permit. If you find that it actually is a light industrial use, as he's arguing, or any sort of industrial use, then she wouldn't have had jurisdiction. And your role would be to basically rescind the permit and send it to the planning board.
Right, so, there's not, I don't, I, we're going backwards here a little bit, but it doesn't seem that there's a need to set a public hearing. That's outside the guidelines of those zoning ordinances. And it's not, it's not our business to go outside the structure of the zoning ordinances.
No, I, I think you'd, I think you'd find, for instance, if you consulted them in that handbook, you always have to have a hearing. I mean, even if you're not calling it a hearing, the opportunity for people to come and be heard makes it a hearing. So, then the question is, did everybody have sufficient opportunity to come and be heard tonight? You know, I see, I see that the developer's attorney is on this call, and he might want to speak to that. I, I know that I spoke to him and told him that the board's meeting tonight was intended just to set a future hearing date. So, I doubt he's ready to put on his full case. But you might ask him.
Yeah, if he'd like to speak, that'd be fine.
Hi, this is Gordon Smith. I represent Iroggo Solar. Yeah, I mean, absolutely, our understanding was that this was just a procedural, you know, meeting for the board to set a date for, to hear the appeal. I agree with Kristen. And I think in both, you know, the, the Board of Appeals statute requires that a hearing of some kind be held. I mean, you can call it whatever you want, but, you know, Kristen's right that the opportunity to be heard and, and it, it also talks about, you know, cross-examination, bringing witnesses and, and entering, providing testimony and exhibits to the board. So, I think that's correct. I mean, if, if the board wants, is, wants to proceed tonight as if tonight were the hearing on the merits, um, you know, I'm not sure I would object to that. But that's up to the, to the board with, with Kristen's advice.
I think there's a procedural problem here. I disagree. I don't think the zoning board of appeals has the right to set a public hearing. I think there's been a procedural problem involving the town. The town had an obligation to notify all people with standing in this matter. That includes direct batters and people within five hundred feet. They should have notified all these people that there was a meeting tonight, but the zoning board of appeals does not have the right to hold public hearings. We have a right to hear an appeal based on input from people both foreign and guests who have legitimate standing. That's where it starts. That's where it ends.
Right, and when this application came in, the problem was just that we didn't have enough time to publish notice of a hearing and to let people know. So, we thought we'd put it on the agenda for tonight to give the board the opportunity to receive it and decide on a date for that hearing. And then, we'd have enough opportunity to, you know, actually advertise and give notice of the hearing. So, if, if both parties are here and adequately represented and they want to waive that notice, you can proceed, but I just want to, you'd want to get that on the record formally from Attorney Smith and from the appellant.
If notices did not go out to batters of people within five hundred feet, I don't think we have the right to proceed. We are going to have to cable this, and we're going to have to set another meeting, but it won't be called a public hearing. It will be called a regular scheduled meeting of the zoning board of appeals for review, for the purpose of reviewing this administrative appeal involving Iroggo Solar.
I agree that it's not a public hearing, but you really should call these hearings. That's a magic word in the legal world. That means everybody has the opportunity to be heard. And I think if you, if you don't use that term, savvy attorneys like Mr. Smith, if they felt like they didn't get the right process, might, might use that as something to, to challenge the, the process.
Well, unless the terminology's changed in the zoning ordinance since I was on the planning board, public hearing was very specific. It was open to the public. The only people who had the right to speak were people who had standing, unless it was agreed upon by both parties that someone else who didn't have standing could talk.
No, I understand. That's, that's semantics. You're saying public hearing. It's not a public hearing, but it is a hearing. A public hearing is where the whole town can come in and speak, and that's not what I'm talking about. But a hearing, just like you'd go in front of a judge, is what you guys are doing.
Well, you know, I don't really care what you call it, as long as people who are supposed to be notified are notified, so that the whole thing becomes legitimate. Otherwise, we're just going to get caught in this ratcheting process. Because they're being reviewed and...
And we're going to have the lawyers fighting back and forth about we didn't follow process. We're just not going to do that. I'm not interested in doing it.
Me neither. Joe?
This is Jared. I, I believe with the, with the board, what would be in order would be you to look at the application, because it's over and done. Deem it complete or incomplete is step one. If it's complete, then schedule a meeting. If it's incomplete, ask the applicant to provide any missing information. I think that is procedural. Kristen, is that correct?
Yeah, I agree with that.
I don't think so, because I don't think it's the board of appeals' purview to make sure the application's in order. We're here to address administrative appeals.
Right.
It's the planning board or the code enforcement or somebody else that does that, all that stuff. We don't look at applications to see if they're complete or not. If somebody comes to us and appeals to us that the application is not correct, then we'll deal with that. But we're not here to look over the developer to see if their application's correct.
No, no, he's talking about...
We're not appeals.
Sir, he's talking about the application for appeal, the actual appeal. Did he fill out the form? If there was a fee, did he submit that fee? You know, are you missing anything that would prevent you from moving forward with hearing the merits of this thing? And it seems to me like that's all in order. So, that's all you'd have to do is make a motion to find that the appeal application is in order and to schedule a hearing for, let's say, two weeks out.
Am I missing? I don't even see the application for appeal. No.
All the way to the back. Yeah, but not all the batters are here. The proper representations here, like you started.
Both the batters didn't even know about it. We just, by chance, found out.
But that's what I'm saying. The rest of them should have the ability to have that, they're correct.
Yeah, I don't know how we can, I mean, we can, we can say that Luke Saroy's application for appeal is complete, but that's as far as the meeting can go with them. I don't, I just don't understand why... Why the meeting was carried. I, I guess I'd like to go back on that. I don't see that his application is incomplete, but, um, I don't know. It's a zoning board appeals decision to make sure that an application is. I don't think it is. I'd agree with that. In fact, I'm getting tired. The only thing that we have an obligation to do is hear the appeal. We don't decide that our application's completed.
Well, certainly, if he hadn't submitted an application, if he had just, you know, put in a two-line letter saying, "I disagree," that he wouldn't have an, an appeal that could be heard. It wouldn't be ripe to be heard because he didn't follow the process and the ordinance. So, you can skip this and just schedule a hearing. And, you know, by getting into the meat of, of the decision, you've implicitly, you know, found that he did what he needed to do to get in front of you. And that's totally fine. And if you'd rather just not take any action tonight, but schedule the, the hearing, I think that's the right thing to do. And the, the ordinance, by the way, does call it a public hearing. So, and, and a hearing in multiple places.
I just want to ask one question. Because normally, we look at it after the, there's an issue with the, with the board, the planning board. But because if I'm, Bailey, you terminated an essential service, it skips the planning board altogether, so it comes straight to us. So, you want us to look at, did she have the right to do that or not?
Yeah.
I mean, that's basically what you're asking us to do, correct?
Yeah, after you've had the hearing, then that's the decision you first need to make. And if he's going to raise other points in his argument, you know, that, that she didn't correctly apply the standards in the ordinance, then you'd address those too. So, at, at this hearing, whenever it's held, the board is going to look at that definition of essential service, apply it to this application, and see if you think that Bailey was right to find that it was an essential service. And if you find that she was right, and he's raised other issues like related to the view or property values or whatever, then, you know, you'd look at the application and see if she was correct in finding that it met all of those standards.
This is all the biggest one.
My concern is, Brian, is that we've continually come here and deal with appeals because our ordinance is deficient. It was before with the other one we had. It wasn't clear cut. I totally agree that a wind farm, I mean, a solar farm is a light industrial. It's not an essential business. You don't need that power. You can get it from other places. People can buy solar power anyway. But the problem is our ordinance allows for that, because it can be designated as an essential service. Therefore, the CEO can go direct. So, what we're coming to, all the time we come here and meet, is that our, our ordinances are deficient and they have problems in there, and we're having to deal with it. So, now it becomes to us to make a judgment call on whether something is deemed this or that. And we did that last time with the cement thing, if you remember. We get down to whether the rocks were coming from here or the rocks were on site. And now, we're going to deal with the same situation. But our ordinance, the code enforcement officer read our ordinance, and she determined, she really had no other choice, that it was an essential service. And so, she went forward and did what she was supposed to do and issued a permit for an essential service. Just because the ordinance is bad, doesn't mean that she's wrong. She doesn't get the opportunity to determine the... She doesn't get the opportunity to determine and change the ordinance.
No.
She has to view the ordinance the way it's written. And when we go to court, that's what they're gonna do, just like they did last time. And that's my concern.
Well, you know, I think it's impossible to write an ordinance that's right all the time.
Exactly. But just understand, while you take a wind farm, it's so much different than, wind farm is a huge project. And it's going up all over the place.
I was a part of waiting in one of the architects of this grid.
Yeah.
That we use now.
And sometimes it's going to be...
Yep. Well, things twenty years ago were unforeseen. Uses were unforeseen.
Exactly.
So, you know, certainly room to improve ordinances or always is. But interpreting ordinances is what it comes down to. You could spend years rewriting ordinances. It's still gonna come down to interpreting.
But the other thing I don't see is...
There's gonna have to be any effort by people who aren't there.
I don't see any effort by the town to straighten out these matters.
Yeah. You know, it's, it's something learned along the way, Bailey.
Currently, Chapter Thirty-eight, my predecessor had worked with attorneys to rewrite the zoning chapter of the town code. And that is in process right now to adjust ordinances.
Now, another thing you could do with this whole thing is you could have a board of selectmen issue an emergency moratorium for a certain period of time and nothing will happen until this, that ordinance is reviewed. Or they, they don't have to do that. They can basically take the ordinance the way it is. But what we're gonna do here is we're gonna go through this thing, just like we did before. We're gonna spend thousands of dollars with lawyers.
Yeah.
And they're gonna come back and tell us what they're gonna tell us.
Yeah. Well, that's, you know, part of the mentality.
Exactly.
Everything gets litigated, you know? Twenty years ago, it didn't. So...
Exactly. People like these people, I feel sorry for them because they bought a piece of property. They wanted the undestructive view. And now, they have to look at glares, solar panels and, uh, and that kind of thing. People like Mark has some land, I feel sorry for him too, because he has the, the right to basically try to get, uh, income from that land in any way he sees feasible without it bothering somebody else. But the ordinance is the real culprit here because it doesn't give a clear-cut guideline of how to go and where to go. But something as massive as Fort Solon, I believe, is something that needs planning board review.
I think that people make decisions and investments that are based on the use or visible appreciation of land that they do not own. That's, was their decision, you know? And I enjoy being a good neighbor. I get along with my neighbors up on the top. It wasn't true for the last forty years. And, uh, but I don't really feel I'm under an obligation to manage my land strictly for their benefit. It's all, though, the reason that I own my land, uh, you know, have to pay in taxes on it, maintain it and doing different things with it, you know? I, I just think that's downright un-American that it's, uh, be required to manage my land for somebody else's benefit, not my own.
So, I guess where we're at is, um, just to give the whole thing legitimate due process, we need to take a step back. We need to schedule another meeting. We need to notify all people with standing that this meeting is gonna occur and they have the right for input. Does that sound reasonable to both the attorneys?
Yes.
That sounds good. That sounds good to me.
Okay. Um, does that sound reasonable to you?
Yeah, yeah. I'd rather wrap it up tonight, but...
Well, we would have too. I thought that's what you were here for.
Right.
So, what kind of time do you need to notify people with standing?
We have to have a public hearing. Those need to be sent to the abutters ten days prior to the meeting. So, if you give us two weeks' time, we should be able to crank them out for spring next week.
So, personally, I'd rather not meet on Friday than... What's anyone else's intuition?
Didn't work good for me.
It doesn't, it doesn't. It didn't.
So, many of the abutters are weekend people. Not all of us. We can get up there anytime, but...
Well, they have the right to input through a lot of different avenues, through Skype, through emails.
Fine.
Um, through letters.
That's fine.
You know, I don't, I don't mind if Friday's a video if you wanna come.
So, your board secretary was thinking the week of the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I can't see the calendar from here. It's the twenty-eighth, a Monday.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, maybe like a...
It's not a selectman's Monday.
But maybe like a Wednesday night?
I can't do Wednesdays.
Why not?
I have my kids.
Oh, we'll bring them.
Yeah, you don't want that.
Okay, Tuesday or Thursday or...
Tuesday for work.
Tuesday?
What time would you like?
Also do the same six o'clock unless people see different. So, we need to make a motion. Make a motion that we meet on, is it the twenty-ninth?
Yes.
On Tuesday, the twenty-ninth. That's six o'clock. Yeah, I should be able to do that.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. For the purposes of holding a public... For holding a meeting of the zoning board of appeals for purposes of administrative appeal application for Diego Solar. All in favor? I guess there must be something else I'm missing. It's time for adjournment.
I'll make a motion during the meeting.
Okay, I'll second it. All in favor? Information to the board of prosecutors as far as...